There are no new words. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of O Canada.
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land, true patriot God, here are my sons coming. With glowing hearts we see rise the true North, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Record of attendance, Linda will get that. Any declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? Good. An approval of agenda additions and deletions. So on a separate page, we have three additions. We have 11A, the change of date for September meeting. 11B, agreement to use information. 11C, election audit proposal. And as well, I'm looking for permission, I'm sure we'll be okay with it. We're 7F, which is the N Globe presentation. And Ms. Cole needs to leave as quickly as she can to be back to the city. So we're just gonna move that up right away. Go ahead.
I was gonna ask your worship to move Avon up.
Okay.
I'll accept the agenda with the...
Thank you. Counselor Dawes, I'm in second, okay? Move by Counselor Mooney, second by Counselor Dawes, and the CAO for the... Three months left in this mandate, but I get to not have used it.
Good. That's not what's important. Okay, so we're...
Question being called.
Yep. On the changes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. So Ms. Cole, if you don't mind, we're gonna turn it over to you. And what's the best way, Jeff, to, for her to do this so that the, because we're on television now?
She is.
Okay? Perfect. So your microphone? Okay. Fix me, fix that.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay, I just keep pressing the wrong buttons. Okay. So you go ahead and you are going to present the findings of the report and then the recommendations.
I am. Thank you, Counselor, thank you Mayor Mooney, Counselors. I'm Avon Cole from N Globe. We were retained by the town to investigate potential contamination issues at the Lake George property formerly known as the Ibbetson site. As part of our investigation, we dug forty test pits across the site. We drilled fourteen bore holes. We installed fourteen monitor wells at those bore holes. We sampled thirteen surface water locations, delineated four wetlands. And in those wetlands, we installed five monitoring stations to look at surface water and sediment quality. And we sampled eleven potable water supplies. The analytical testing that we conducted in soil, we conducted metals, phenols, creosols, PAHs, and at one location petroleum hydrocarbons. In groundwater, we analyzed metals, general chemistry, phenols, creosols, and PAHs. Sediment, we analyzed metals, phenols, creosols, and PAHs. Surface water, metals, general chemistry, phenols, creosols, and PAHs. And in potable water, metals and general chemistry, phenols. And at two locations, we analyzed coliforms. Once we collected all of our analytical results, we compared the results to the Nova Scotia Environment Tier One agricultural potable water guidelines and the Nova Scotia Environment Tier One residential potable guidelines. So our findings indicated that at three locations on the Ibbetson site, we had soil with exceedances over the Nova Scotia Environment regulated guidelines. At two locations in groundwater, we had metals exceedances of arsenic. Cobalt was high at several of these monitor locations, but based on our interpretation of the guideline, we felt that it was not an issue at the site. We found various elevated metals in surface water at both ends of the site and the site drains both towards Lake George and Killam Lake. The metals were of concern because they were elevated over the freshwater aquatic life guidelines. Generally, they would not be a concern for human health. At the potable water locations, we had previous elevations of elevated lead. Those two elevated lead results were not repeated in the March testing, but we did detect a high arsenic concentration at the potable well that was on the Ibbetson site. So, seeing the slide. In summary, the elevated concentrations over the Nova Scotia regulated guidelines has triggered the contaminated sites process. To follow the contaminated sites process and to keep the town in compliance with the regulations, we developed a recommended course of action to address the surface water impacts, to address the soil impacts, the two groundwater impacts, and the surface water impacts at the site. So the plan is presented to council formally in a proposal that they have reviewed, the scope, the recommendations, the deliverables, and the costing. To quickly summarize that, we plan to collect onsite groundwater data. It will help us to support our opinion that no chemical cleanup is needed to address the isolated soil and groundwater at the site. We will establish new surface water collection locations and we will collect one year's worth of surface water data over quarters to allow us to further delineate the impacts in surface water and to allow us to evaluate the seasonal effects. This testing will also help us decide the most practical manner to address the surface water impacts. For the potable water wells, since there were only two houses that had metals impacts that were over the guideline and one house that had a metals impact approaching the guideline, we recommend further testing at those locations. The remaining homes, we don't recommend any further testing. On the behalf of the town, we have started the first round of Nova Scotia Environment paperwork and we still have to finalize some of the third-party notification forms. Once the Nova Scotia paperwork is all, the next round of Nova Scotia paperwork is received, we'll complete it on your behalf. Include my presentation.
Good. Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Thank you for everything you've done. So, so in front of us, we have, and we've had it for a week, we have the N Globe proposal for continued monitoring of water at, at 2014 Lake George Road. And the recommendation is that the proposal be accepted. And, and basically, all of the work, except the communication with council and the community, thank you for this, is required by Nova Scotia Environment and it'll bring us closer to a conclusion. So the motion would be to accept. Counselor Mooney?
I accept, I make a motion to accept the recommendations as presented and accept the report.
Okay.
I second that, Your Worship.
Moved by Counselor Mooney, second by Counselor Dawes. Counselor Dennis?
Yes, I just wanna ask a question on it. Why are we testing Lake George 212, given that we're having Adam disconnect that well?
Currently, there is still the opportunity for the water in that well to be consumed and you should test it until such time that the water source is disconnected.
I'm, I'm sorry, Your Worship. Can I ask, can I ask you something?
Sorry. The well at 2012 Lake George Road, the Ibbetson property, is still connected to Adam's house. Did I get the civic addresses wrong?
No, it's all right.
Okay. Until that well is disconnected and there is no potential to consume the water, council should continue to test that water.
Thank you. Good. Any more questions for you?
Questions.
Okay. Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, so we're back up to the top there. So we're looking at approval of minutes. Committee of the whole for June 7th, 2016. Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Mooney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Town council meeting, June 7th. Moved by deputy.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mooney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Public hearing, June 9th, 2016.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Dennis, second by Counselor Mooney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Regular town council meeting of June the 9th. Moved by deputy.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mooney.
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Town council, June 24th. Moved by Counselor Dennis. Second by Counselor Mooney.
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Committee of the whole, June 27th.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Mooney. Second by Deputy Mayor. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. What did I just do, council, town council?
(inaudible).
Okay, so town council right after that, June 27th.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Mooney. Second by Counselor Dennis.
Question.
Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Committee of the whole, June 30th.
So moved.
So moved, by Counselor Mooney. Second by deputy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. And town council, June 30th. Moved by Counselor Dennis.
Second.
Second by, by Counselor Mooney. All those, and we'll get them all confused, all those in favor?
Maybe next time.
Aye. (laughing) What's that? It is quite a few meetings, there's no such thing as two meetings a month. Unless you're out there and you're considering running, then basically it's really easy. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Business arising. Yes, that's right, get back here, 'cause it's budget time. So 2016-17 budget. Okay, so basically, the motion is that council accept a budget with revenues in the amount of $17,360,098 and expenses of $17,359,653 for an overall surplus, I'm glad we're all sitting, for, of $444, $45 for its general operations for the year ended March 31st, 2017. Residential rates, $167 per 100 of assessment. Commercial property is $431 per 100 of assessment. Resource general, $167 per 100. And farmland is $216 per acre. Do we have town, farmland in the town? Okay, just checking, just in case. And also included in that, the residential garbage collection and processing, $180 per dwelling, up to a maximum of four, at which time it becomes commercial. And then we've got the base rates. We're also doing depreciation in the amount of $1,825,000. Good to go. Anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, is within the, the documents that you have in front of you contains all of the rates, including the interest rate, all of the base rates for sewer and the, the effluent rate, excuse me, the effluent rate for sewer as well. Those all form part of your, your motion. The document is available, as you've read, online. The, the budget itself will be posted tomorrow.
Okay, good. So, so basically, tax revenues have decreased because of lower assessments. But we've still, and, and I'll just say a few things that we've still managed to do. So we've continued year four of a five-year sewer rate plan. Sewer rate increase and tax rates decrease, meaning the residential tax rate drops four cents to $167 and the commercial rate drops eight cents to $431. We continue to fund our depreciation, $1.8 million, which allows us to have 6.6 million capital expenditure planned for the current year. We plan to spend $600,000 on street and sidewalk improvements and start a $4 million project on Brown and Cliff Street. First full year with our new transit system, so we're excited about that. The LED streetlight conversion project was completed last year. We're seeing $125,000 in power savings annually. $125,000 in power savings, that's awesome, for some streetlights, okay? And we're investing in the small wind project with our neighbors and we'll start to see revenues later this year, so up to $50,000 annually. And I, I have to ask this, so, so the way they were going to set up that wind project is that you would be able to go online, right on our website, and see kind of the clock ticking? It's a money clock, I call it. So it's really, it's really neat there. So, so all good stuff. So we are looking for a motion to approve the budget. Moved by deputy and second by Counselor Dawes. Any more discussion?
Question.
Question, yeah, did you? Yeah. You go ahead, put your light on, whoever puts it on first gets it. Go ahead, Counselor.
And maybe to the CAO, over the next five years, can you tell us how much we're gonna be spending in our capital budget? Might be interesting to know. You said 18 million, you'll be right, but...
Yeah. $18 million in our capital budget. I'm gonna give that to him and then I'll give you one second there, Jim.
Yeah, so, so 18 million is projected figure, obviously, the capital budget is approved year to year. One of the things, and, and Her Worship touched on it, one of the reasons that we can do that and we can plan that way is because we do fund our depreciation expense with current year tax revenue and that gives us the ability to invest more in our infrastructure, pound for pound, than any other town. And, yeah, it puts us in a pretty good place as far as catching up on the infrastructure deficit.
So, so in plain English, 'cause I get a lot of, I've had people say, "Why don't you always talk about fund your depreciation?" Correct me if I'm wrong, this is how I frame it. When, when I was growing up, many of us were growing up, our parents couldn't go out and get everything on credit. They had to save up for it. So every year, we put money aside to kind of pay for what we've used up. And it's, it adds up, it's great. Deputy?
Jeff, under, the third item, under following residential assessment, commercial property assessment, I'm not sure I know what resource general is.
It's, it's undeveloped land, undeveloped, unserviced land.
Okay.
And so we have a small amount of that within the town. In rural municipalities, it's, it's, it's more extensive. They have general resource and they also have forest resource. And so those typically have lower tax rates because they don't require the same kind of services that occupied land, developed land does.
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship.
You're welcome, deputy. Okay. So did we move and second that? Any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. 7B, letter of support, REY YARC. Counselor Mooney?
Worship will make the motion, Town of Yarmouth, support the construction of a new regional arts facility in the town of Yarmouth.
Second that, Your Worship.
Moved by Counselor Mooney, second by Counselor Dawes. Any discussion? Question's been called, all those in, you good, Nick? I just talked to Nick for a second before and, and I said you can, you can have like one minute, I think I said two, but, two minutes.
My own? Thank you, thank you very much.
You are. We, we don't usually do this.
I knew this day was coming, you know, it's been a while and I, you gave me two minutes, but I'm... A decision was made here several years ago that was a pivotal decision in the town of Yarmouth, probably the most important decision that was made in the last generation for this town. I've been here since the year 2000, I've made my living for the last 15 years here in the arts community. I spent nine years at the ARC. I was the House Committee Chair for five years. I'm acutely aware of what shape that building is in. But what building around here isn't falling down, you know? I mean, we need a generational decision here to change the course of history. This can do that. And it's incumbent upon all of you to know that. This is our community and this can turn around. We have that ability, we can do it. However, to just jump on something because some people say, "Well, now's the time." You know, the funding is out there. Well, like I said to Mayor Mooney, the funding is there for a good project at any time. And one that is pivotal to a town, as in all the towns across North America that have had this revitalization plan thrown at them through arts and culture, through theaters across this land. It has been done time and time again. They are pivotal to the communities that they thrive in. And I saw, I saw what can be done at the ARC. I know what a few creative minds can do. I know how powerful it is. And I know that we can do this. But we can't be led, we have to lead. Because some people say, "Oh, we need a new building." You know, they had an, they had an opportunity back the last time and they said, "No, we're not gonna do it." And we're gonna, we're gonna take that opportunity away from a whole generation of people in this town, all of southwest Nova Scotia. It's not about revitalizing downtown Yarmouth, it's about revitalizing the whole southwest Nova Scotia. We have that opportunity. I know that because it's, you know, it's what we do here. I mean, we all have that opportunity and, you know, I made a whole bunch of notes here, but...
You get it.
You know, you plant the tree, if it doesn't take, you move it somewhere else. That place has been there for 50 years and there's nothing, nothing spawned from it. Nothing, not one thing. However, if you look at, I'll give you a couple of examples. Downtown Halifax, why are they building that convention center downtown in the middle of the heartland? Because it needs to be there. Why are they building a new Oilers Arena in downtown Edmonton, right on Jasper Avenue? Because it needs to be there. They built the Citadel Theater back there 40 years ago when everybody said, "Why do you want to do this? We can build it out here, we can build it out there." And they said, "There's no parking," but they built it. Now there's the Wind Spear, there's the, the convention center, there's all of this stuff. There's 80 restaurants within walking distance. What do people say when they come to Yarmouth? They want someplace to go, they want something to eat, they wanna, they wanna... The possibilities for conventions, we want to bring people, we want to bring businesses to this town. How do you do that? You bring conventions. We could incorporate a convention center in with this and make it a destination. And we have, we have that within us to do that, you know? I mean, it's not about bringing industry, it's about making a culture, you know? And this is that opportunity to do this. And I'm not gonna be sold, "Oh, the building's falling down, we gotta do it." That's just not the case. Everything around here needs fixing up, you know? And painting, flowers aren't gonna do it. It's nice, costs a lot of money, it's a lot of upkeep, but we can do this.
Thank you, Nick.
You know? I'm the only member here that I can see from the arts community, I don't know why, I don't, I guess it wasn't out there, but, you know, I'm here for the long haul and, you know, I know we can do this. And, but I'm, I'm not gonna be sold on, on, on something that's, you know, just because the funding's right, blah, blah, blah. It's just not the case, you know? We, we need to think big and we need to think as big as we can go and...
Good.
That's, that's my two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Okay. Good to go? What?
I'm an arts, I speak arts.
You, you can have, yeah, you can have a minute. I'll cut you off after a minute.
I'm Rob Powell, I've been involved in the arts since 12. I play classical guitar and I've loved this town.
Yeah, can you speak right in?
Sorry. Okay. So as an add-on to Nick's comments, I missed the beginning of them. I've been spreading the seed of trying to reutilize the high school as an arts center and mixed use with the YMCA moving their pool to there as well as world-class artifacts from the Walters Arts Gallery from Baltimore to come here, possibly the Yale Museum as well into the upper floors and the eastern wing of the high school. And then retool the stage for the YARC, could be integrated there or have other events in there. And then the new wing could be shared learning, distance learning from all the universities who want to participate in. It would keep our students here for a year or two before they go off. So I know the building's sitting there floundering, there's not a lot of offers, just talk about residential units. But, you know, everyone I've hatched this idea, I've talked to the town planner, to Caroline, she thinks it's fantastic. I have not met one person who didn't think this was a fantastic idea. And I have a letter out there with, with the Minister of Culture.
Mr. Rins.
Redirect, yes. So he didn't give me much good feedback on that, he just redirected me to one of his subordinates. So I just wanted to get that out, it was a good venue to bring that idea out, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, good, we ready for the question?
Question, Your Worship.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Meeting refunding, Counselor Mooney?
Thank you, Your Worship. Where as a new regional arts facility will only be constructed with support from all three levels of government, municipal, provincial, and federal, and also with community and corporate support. I hereby move the Town of Yarmouth facilitated meeting with the Mayor of the Town of Yarmouth, Provincial MLA, the Honorable Zach Churchill, Federal Member of Parliament Colin Frazier, and the Building Committee and/or their executive and also representative from the Regional Economic Network with the goal of exploring all funding opportunities for the construction of a new facility.
Second that, Your Worship.
Moved by Counselor Mooney, second by Counselor Dawes.
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Good to go. Second reading, penalty bylaw. Okay. Okay, so second reading, does anybody wish to speak to this? I'll ask three times. Would anyone like to speak to this issue, the penalty bylaw? Number three, anyone wish to speak to the penalty bylaw?
Why is it 11895, Your Worship? Is that, does it come up to a special number?
That's just the, the minimum amount that's set by the province every...
Would you speak that in the maximum possible?
Pam.
Oh, sorry there, Mr. Lawyer.
That's the minimum amount set by the province. They just change it every so often, I don't think there's any magic to it or anything.
Okay, good.
Okay, good, so I'm looking for a motion to approve second reading?
So move.
Got all kinds of...
Question.
Have you got? Okay, she's got it. Okay, question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Okay, second reading, vacant buildings bylaw. Would anybody like to speak in the audience to the vacant building bylaw? Would anyone like to speak to the vacant building bylaw? And I'll ask a third time, anyone wish to speak to this bylaw? Okay, hearing no one, I'm looking for a motion to approve second reading. Moved by Counselor Dennis.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mooney.
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Second reading, Central Business District Improvement Plan bylaw. Would anyone like to speak to this? Anyone like to speak to the, boy, that's a long one, Central Business District Improvement Plan bylaw? One last time, would anyone like to speak to this one? Okay, hearing no one, I'm looking for a motion to approve second reading.
So move.
Moved by Counselor Mooney, second by Counselor Dennis. Any further discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Two of us, how, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Okay, we did F because... Okay, we did F because that was N-Globe. Is there anything else we have to with N-Globe? We're finished with that, aren't we? Okay, good. Okay. And the new business, Car Stereos, C.A.O.
Your Worship, I apologize for not having a request for decision attached, but I believe I did circulate an email a few weeks back. We, we've received a complaint and a request that council consider acting on the annoyance of loud car stereos within the town. My suggestion for you tonight is to recommend, or sorry, to refer the matter to the Police Advisory Committee and with a request for a recommendation from them.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to do that. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship. I would make that motion to recommend that be referred to the...
Police Advisory Board.
Police Advisory Committee.
It's coming to you. You're the chair.
Yeah, just send it to me.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mooney.
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. First reading amendment to the vacant buildings bylaw. I did? I didn't? Go ahead.
Hey, Worship, we have a small couple of amendments we'd like to make to the vacant buildings bylaw. First is simply to define what an opening is in a vacant building. And the second is to also reference not only vacant, but partially vacant buildings as well. So those two amendments, sorry, there's also another one that in section 11B refers to applying panels to prevent deterioration and to improve aesthetics is the amendment there. So these amendments are for your consideration. If approved, we proceed to a public hearing next council meeting and consideration of adoption.
Okay. Moved and seconded.
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Request for decision to 2012 Lake George Road. So the recommendation is recommended that the, there was, there was a request for water from 2012 Lake George Road. It's recommended that the request for the Town of Yarmouth to supply drinking water be denied on the basis that the well testing carried out indicates the well water complies with all the requirements of Health Canada Drinking Water Guidelines.
Worship, to the C.A.O., we had a presentation by Ms. Cole tonight. And what was her, her understanding of the situation at 212? 212 Lake George Road and what was her...
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
So there were two, there are actually two wells. There's one on the property at 2012 Lake George Road. It is a dug well. And the tests that we carried out in February and March, the water passed on all of the metal and chemical parameters of the Health Canada Drinking Water Guidelines. And on that basis, that well will no longer be tested as part of our go-forward plan on, on Lake George. The other well that the property is connected to is a well that is on 2014 Lake George Road. It's a drilled well on our property. And we've advised the tenant, sorry, the, the resident that we wish the well to be decommissioned and, and to be notified when it is decommissioned. And at that point, as Ms. Cole indicated, when it's no longer connected to a residence, then we will cease to test it and we will ensure that it's fully decommissioned.
Okay.
So in, I guess in summary, provided that the dug well is properly maintained, there should be no problem with potable water at that property.
Okay. Deputy or Counselor Dennis? I don't know how your light got on there. Your light's on.
Yes, okay. From what I understand, through this, their well is high in coliforms. And N-Globe didn't check any of that. Am I right?
So we weren't, we weren't testing for coliforms because we were looking for impacts from 2014 Lake George Road, from previous mill activities and from the compost. And there were no metals or chemicals in the compost. And the testing at that well indicated that there were none in that well. So it is, is safe drinking water provided that the well is maintained. And by, what I mean by that is that Nova Scotia Environment has guidelines for homeowners who have their own well to maintain it. That includes twice a year coliform tests. Because coliforms are naturally occurring in the environment. If you have any deficiencies in your well, you could have coliforms. And so the treatment for that is to, is to chlorinate. Yeah, chlorine, do another test. You have no coliforms, you're good to go. So we didn't test for that. If they have coliforms, it's a, it's an easy fix. It's JAVEX and, and do another test. And they should do that every six months. And they should do, any well owner, according to Environment, should do a full spectrum chemical analysis every one to two years. And given the concerns that we've heard from Lake George over the last six months or so, I think that it'd be well advised to, for their own peace of mind, to carry out that test too. It's not expensive and it would give them perhaps that peace of mind that their well has not been impacted.
Thank you. Deputy?
Your Worship and Jeff, there are two wells. And I just want to be clear on, on, on this information you're providing us. The well, you're referring to the well on his own property and not the well which is on town property at this point? Can, is, is that well on town property being used currently as far as we know by, by Adam?
Well, we don't know. I would, I would suggest it's not being used for two reasons. One, it's, it's a manual switch that he has to throw in his home to access the drilled well on our property. And my understanding, our understanding, what we've been told by him is that it's a backup supply that he uses if he runs into shortages in his dug well. Our last round of testing showed elevated levels of arsenic, which he was made aware of immediately. And it'd be ill-advised to introduce that without some sort of treatment into his, his home water system for his family.
I want to, I want to support staff recommendation, but I'm, I'm just concerned, Jeff and, and maybe Greg, that we make sure that we do the right thing when it comes to the well that's on town property.
We, we are, we are doing, we are doing the town property well.
You know, that, that it, that, that Adam is, at a certain point in time, that household will not be using that well and not be able to use the well.
Yeah, so the information I received tonight following our meeting is that our consultants, N-Globe, have been advised by Adam not to go near that well, that he is seeking legal counsel. And, you know, we, we aren't particularly interested in creating undue waves. We have told him with the last round of testing, which was in March, that there was arsenic in the well. Unless he plans to treat it, as I said, I think he would be unwise to use that water. So he should seek legal advice. And if his advice confirms what our advice confirms, then the matter can, can be brought to an end. If there's any discussion through that process, be, you know, from his lawyer to our lawyer and we'll, we'll talk about sort of what the outcomes of that discussion are. So I've advised Avon, sorry, N-Globe, not to test that well at this time. So the last test is a fail. No test, no test at this time does not give a pass. It simply gives us a, a gap in our data. But in interest of not creating undue issues at this point, I'd suggest we skip a quarter. The well is, is not well-maintained. We have not had any interest in maintaining it. The well cap is an inverted bucket. So he should be concerned about the quality of the water.
So if we, if we support your recommendation, that isn't going to conflict with what you've heard tonight and today with Avon. It's not going to make it more difficult for you. The other item, Jeff, in all this is if we don't support your recommendation, I'm, I'm concerned that it could be precedent-setting. And I just, that's a concern that I have.
Right, so, so the issue, Your Worship, if I may?
Certainly.
The issue is, is that you have, you have met sort of the, the standard in terms of his dug well. Typically, two passes is, is a green light for, for potable water. Now, we did not test for coliform. And again, I've addressed that. That's something that can easily be managed. And is, it should be managed in every, every well in the province that's being used for potable water. I'm sure without a doubt that he is not pleased with, with our decision to request the disconnection from the drilled well because it's, it's an added benefit. If it's good water, it's an added benefit to, to him. But that is our well that he's had access to for a period of time. It's no longer potable. We have no interest in maintaining it. And so it is, it is not in our interest that he continue to, to access it and potentially access contaminated water.
Maybe we can deed him a portion of our property so he could have the well.
I don't think that was a question.
No, that wasn't a question.
No, that was, that's, and I appreciate that. So with the information provided and the discussion, not only here, but earlier tonight, I support, make a motion to support staff's recommendation.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Worship. I just have one, one last question. This recommendation naturally. I'm, I'm assuming that I'm, and I'm looking for confirmation that this recommendation is a result from consulting with our, our town solicitor.
You good with that recommendation?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, all right. Good?
Thank you very much.
Okay, any more, any more discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay. Request for decision, eh, what? Sorry. Go ahead.
So 18 Industry Avenue is, the owner has requested that the, the development agreement be discharged. The property is for sale. And I believe he, he feels that the general provisions of our land use bylaw and municipal planning strategy give him a better opportunity to sell the, sell the property in the market than the restrictions within the development agreement.
That's really good.
Yes.
It is.
I think so.
Okay. So the recommendation is that council discharge the existing development agreement registered at 18 Industry Avenue. I'm looking for that motion.
So move.
Move by Counselor Mooney. Second by Counselor Dawes. Any more discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Downtown streetscape upgrades. C.A.O., go ahead.
Okay, Your Worship.
Do you have it? I have it right here.
I do. The issue I have with this, I do, what we have is a recommendation to award the downtown streetscape improvements. We had a single bid and I have no issue with the bid itself or the completion timeframe. The completion timeframe's a bit of a, bit of a challenge, given the time of year we will get into. But the, the larger issue that I'm concerned about at this point is that some of this work overlaps with a project that we are, we are still waiting for funding notification on. That is the Cliff Street, Brown Street project. So some of the, some of the work would be done on the corner of Cliff and Main and Brown Street in Main. And so if we award this contract, and I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't at, at some time, I would hate to see, put ourselves in a situation where we're actually giving a contractor the go-ahead to do this work and not have a mechanism to hold them back from doing the work until the other contract is, is executing. So it...
Want to defer it to next month?
Can we defer it at least two weeks and discuss it at committee of the whole? We might have more information at that time that may allow us to, to award this.
All right, so I need a motion to defer it?
Please.
Okay. Okay, by Counselor Dennis?
I just have a, so we would, if we don't, if we intended to, if we awarded the contract, we might compromise, Jeff, is what you're saying?
Well, I'm not sure if we have a mechanism. And I haven't consulted with legal counsel on this. If we have a mechanism to stop the contractor from fulfilling the contract and being paid.
I want, I want to do what you want us to do in this case because I don't want to lose funding in other areas.
Can we award it with stipulation? It's kind of hard. Yeah, we need to wait.
Yeah, I want to, I want to discuss it with Greg before we...
Yeah, good, okay. So the motion is to defer? Yeah, I need a seconder, please. Deputy, okay, Phil. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you have a question? They're leaving.
You're leaving.
They're out. Counselor, did you have a question for them?
I'm, I'm not taking this personally.
Oh, you should.
I, I do believe that one of the two gentlemen that just left the room could answer this question.
Okay.
We moved this forward. How far back is this going to take us on, with our, with our upgrade plan?
Okay.
Yes, but by how long? By how much?
But it's not, it doesn't matter until we get other funding.
Yes, I know.
Right, so, so it would depend on that. So the answer, I wouldn't, I don't think there's going to be an answer. Until we know when our funding's coming. But we can, we can ask that when they come back in.
If we could at least get a start for this year?
Yeah, we can only do that if we get the other funding.
Yeah.
When? I'm hoping. They're in conference. You have to laugh. Okay.
Are we going to let them stop our work?
11A. Does anybody have a, an issue with changing the September council meeting?
No, do you...
Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship. I would make a motion to change the date for our next meeting in, in September to one week past.
Can I have a seconder?
I'm sorry, what date would that make? I'm sorry, I'm not prepared.
It's just a week. We can only do it. We can only do it the one week.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Good. What else can we do? Agreement to use, well, I don't have that. Do you have, oh, wait a minute now. They need to, he needs to speak, speak to that. Yep. What's that? Okay, deputy, can we do the committee of the whole? You good with that? I'll have to go back for Natalie's item. Okay, go ahead, deputy.
Motions from the committee of the whole, June 27. I move that the recommendations regarding grants to organizations transfer to surplus of $75,000 and the reduction of staff person for a half a year be accepted.
So moved by deputy, seconded by Counselor Dawes. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
All right, motions from the committee of the whole dated June 30. There's only 30...
There's only 30 of those, so it's not too bad. I, I move that a letter of support be provided to the Clean Ocean Action Committee in their supportive guidelines in the oil and gas exploration off our shelf.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Mooney. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to investigate the cost of three or four cigarette receptacles throughout Main Street.
Second.
Moved by Counselor. Okay, Counselor Dawes.
I've been waiting for this one for three years.
Counselor Dawes gets a second, okay? Any discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the town of Yarmouth ask the traffic authority to look into the possibility of installing a pride walk in Yarmouth.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So I just want to say this. Stipulate, lots of stipulations, and he sent us all that. But the other thing, I, I sent a note to Halifax. They're not, they don't stay there. I've had questions about, do they, like, are they permanent? So they aren't, they aren't permanent paint, the ones that they're doing in Halifax. Just, just for your information.
Questions.
Okay, question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that those applying for a low income, for the low income grant through the town of Yarmouth be provided with the No Association Power House Warming Program information.
Second.
Second by Counselor Dawes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Carried?
I move that a request for proposals be released to interested parties for the preparation of a work program and to complete a development plan on Water Street in the town of Yarmouth.
Second by Counselor Dennis. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions.
Question's been called. Yep, go ahead.
And this probably goes to the Chair of the Waterfront Development Corporation. Mr. Chair, just what are you looking for, the request for proposals or the scope of work or, or interested activities? What's going to happen for Water Street?
I think what we're, Caroline Robertson is going to send out information, and I'll let Ben give it into Jeff, and we're going to hopefully get her feedback within 10 days, two weeks. Jeff, sir?
Right, so within the municipal planning strategy review, one of the consultation sessions that our planner carried out was with the Waterfront Development Corporation. And it was, it was a very good conversation, led to our consultant saying, you know what? This deserves a little more focused study on its own. So within the MPS that, that you approved, there's, there's a gap, which is, which is Water Street. So this RFP would be to engage a consultant to fill that gap, to do a consultative process with the Waterfront Development Corporation, with the community at large, and come up with the, the recommendations to fill in the gap of, of what future development rights and opportunities ought to be on Water Street.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Good, okay.
Question?
So question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to prepare an expression of interest for vendors to set up bus, bus shelters.
Thought we took that out of our budget. I did, I thought we took that out.
Yeah, we, we did remove it from the budget. I think the intention here was to see if there was an opportunity. Someone was creative enough to come up with an opportunity whereby they would provide the bus shelters in exchange for something other than financial consideration directly from the town. But within the, the RFP, as we have, as we have drafted it, or the expression of interest, we would also be soliciting from those that sell bus shelters in anticipation that even though we may not purchase them this year, we will want bus shelters in the future. So we'll see a variety of expressions of interest with different ideas.
Thank you. That, that clears that up for me. Okay, so there's, did some, you second that, Counselor Dennis? Go ahead.
Yeah. In that also, wasn't there something about if someone does it, will our bylaw allow them to put signage on it?
So presently, within our, within our land use bylaw, and it, it won't change within the new land use bylaw when that is, is approved by the province, council has the right, reserves the right to approve signage in the street right-of-way. And because these would be located mostly within the street right-of-way, then you would have the, the say in terms of any signage. So you could entertain a proposal that in, include, sorry, incorporated a signage component, but you would have to be prepared to consider fulfillment of that signage opportunity.
Okay, so like if a big company, say, wanted to build us a bus shelter, they'd put their signage on it?
Or if?
But they'd have to build it and pay for it?
Yes. But, but I guess my question was at the time, same thing as you're asking, Counselor. Somebody can have it built and then get 10 people's signs on it as advertisement.
We don't want them tacky.
No, I don't like that either. But that's, that's, if we're allowing this, we're allowing that.
No.
So the, the expression of interest process allows you to, to get general ideas, not fully developed concepts.
Exactly.
Look at them, determine which ones interest you.
Right.
Right, we could get a whole lot of, of very different expressions of interest, or we could get one or two. In any case, you will have the right to determine which to proceed with in terms of looking at a proposal.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Good. Okay, do we have a mover and a seconder? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy?
I move that the report as presented by the town engineer be accepted and that fully actuated traffic lights be installed at the Brunswick Street slash Stars Road intersection.
Oh, that's a tough one.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question, I mean, no, wait now. I just thought of this on the spur of the moment. Why can't we move the lights that are on the, on Pleasant and, and Stars Road to Stars Road and Brunswick Street and have those new lights on Pleasant and Stars, on Stars Road? I know, I, I, question, your worship?
Good.
I call, I know it's a crazy comment, but.
No, it's not a crazy comment.
Actuated, actuated lights are wonderful and.
Cost you more, yeah.
I know it would cost a whole lot more.
Okay.
Anyway, question, your worship.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Nay. Sorry. I go through there 10 times a day, and I just can't.
You're, you're.
Yeah, I know, but that's, the majority wins.
Yes, I know, but I still try.
Try only counts in cards, okay?
I move that Ryan Gibson, Assistant Professor with St. Mary's University Development of Geographical and Environmental Studies, present to council on rural vibrancy local development.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Dennis. Any discussion?
Questions?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
The last one, your worship, and fellow counselors, I move that the information provided by the fire chief on open wood burning fires be posted to the town of Yarmouth website.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dawes. So, so Ruby's here. Thank you for coming, Ruby, and I just, I had a brief conversation with Ruby to explain the process because she didn't understand why it wasn't there. And, and you're not alone. A lot of people said, why isn't the information there? So basically, everything goes through committee, which we did two weeks ago, and then we ratify it here at, at council. So the other piece was that nobody made a motion with regard to the fire pits. So right now, that's, that's nowhere. And I just wanted you to, I say, understand, just so you know, because you were asking, where do we go, where do we go from here?
So will the, our report be on the town's website?
Yeah, so how quickly does that, I mean, he just. Oh, you have it. Oh, she has it. So she says she can put that on right away. See?
It had to wait until this moment.
But we had to ratify it. Process, there's nothing worse than process.
It's nowhere, so?
Exactly. Well, we haven't seen the information either.
No.
Right, we haven't seen the information.
It's not over total.
Not over total.
That's right.
Okay, I just, yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
And just to speak to that, your worship, I'm just wondering, maybe talk to, speak to Ruby or whoever else, because they said abolish the, abolish the bylaw first and then maybe go rebuild a, a new one. But that would, you know, when you go do that, you have to look about proximity to houses, what the permissible burning materials are.
We can't do that?
No, I don't, no, we can't do that at this, that, that has to go through the Planning and Advisory Committee. So maybe I'll make a motion, your worship, or maybe I'll make a motion to refer to the committee of the whole. A motion to send back our open fire bylaws for either updating and/or changing in regards to proximity to homes or apartments in, in relation to the blue dot initiative, in relation to permissible burning materials, in relation to the size of burn barrels and/or containers, and any other applicable regulations or restrictions. So maybe we can send that back to PAC, let them have a look at it and come back with a recommendation, and to give the public an opportunity to see the process, come in, give their input and see where we go from there.
Did you get that, Linda? Okay, so you're going to, you're going to pass that to Linda in writing?
Yeah. So we, so we could, so we could put it in a pipeline and just see, and maybe in the, in the meantime, I don't know when the PAC meets again, but check with other municipal units. I'm not saying like the municipality of, like the city of Halifax. Municipality of Halifax was one of the ones that they used as an example, but when you have places like.
Well, Shelburne, I think Shelburne was one of them.
But I'm not talking about like the municipality of Shelburne, like Town of Shelburne, New Glasgow, Kentville, you know, Amherst, Truro, Bridgewater, towns that are similar to our size and have the same proximity. Have a look to see what they do.
Good, okay, so the motion was made. Does someone second that? Do you know who seconded?
The deputy, I approve deputy's.
Okay, good, all right, so Counselor Dawes, you're on.
Thank you, your worship. Nothing against my colleague's pipeline, very informative. But would not that information be available with what the fire chief is making available on the, on the town's website? We don't know that yet.
No.
So maybe we're duplicating the work.
Do you know what's? Do you know what's in that report that he's putting on there?
I'm quite sure that at least a question of proximity from, from building to building would be, would be in that report.
All right, so if it's in there, we just won't do it.
All right, all right, fine. Nothing against, nothing against it.
No, no, no.
Just.
Okay.
Why quadruple work?
Question?
No, not yet.
So the first motion wasn't voted on?
No, there was nothing there. Oh, yes, okay, all right, so we need to vote on the posting to the website piece, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
So on the other motion, just for clarity, was, was the motion to refer it to committee of the whole?
Is that referred to planning and budget?
So in the past, it has never been part of our land use bylaw. It's been a separate, in a separate bylaw, fire prevention bylaw, which has been managed by the Director of Fire Services, not the Planning Advisory Committee. So I just want to make that clarification. If you're sure you want to have it considered as part of the land use bylaw, okay. So perhaps just refer it to staff to, for a staff report?
So, okay, that, your worship, to refer to staff?
Who seconded that?
I didn't.
Okay, all right, good, okay, so it's to refer to staff, okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Damn, what a mess we got here. Okay, thank you, deputy. So we're going backwards, so from our economic development officer, a recommendation that staff recommends to council to approve recommendation from the Yarmouth Facade Society to maintain the Phase One program district, Main Street from King Street to Forest Street for the 2016 Downtown Facade Program. Does anybody have anything different they'd like to say, Counselor? Oops. I don't know where the, oh, go ahead, CAO first.
Yeah.
CAO first.
Just, just to say, this, this recommendation came from economic development officer who meets with the facade society. They considered the options, and, and it was their consensus opinion that this would be the recommendation to council. Recognizing that this is not the way that we, that we had envisioned the program going. We had envisioned an area for year one, and there would be a separate area designated for year two. So this recommendation is a little contrary to our original thoughts around the program. So I know, I know that there will be some people who will not be happy, no matter what decision you make. If you decide to accept the society's recommendation, obviously, people within that area will, will be happy, and so, and so will the society. But anyone who had expectations about a different area being designated will be disappointed, vice versa. If you designate a different area, you will, you will be disagreeing with the society that volunteers their time to administer this program on your behalf, and you'll be going against their advice, you know, and their experience in running the program. So I think it's kind of a, a no-win. Somebody's going to be unhappy with this decision, no matter which way you go.
Gee, that was helpful.
And, and to look at the other way, your worship, we are spending, we put $175,000 in, in last year. They spent $122,018, so we had $52,982. Now we've got $25,000 extra dollars to put in the Phase One area. So maybe we'll do that this year, the next year, and I'll make a motion for next year's budget that we allot $175,000 to do a Phase Two in the facade program.
Moved and seconded. So I have a question. The 52982 is 28,000 plus the 25? We put 25 in this year?
No, I think it's, I think it's 52982 plus 25, right?
No, it's not.
The 25 is a part of 175,000. There was 150 last year.
Okay, so we're doing 52,982 this year.
Oh, I got, okay, all right.
So we're still doing over $50,000 worth of work, which will be matched with maybe three or four to $1. So you're probably looking at $200,000 invested in the Phase One portion of the project again. And like the CAO said, you're not going to keep everybody happy with what we've done. But if we do accept the second part of the proposal, maybe I'll change that from 150, 175 to 150 to keep the original intent. And let's do this, like your worship, block by block. We can see what has happened in Phase One and the positive feedback we've received. We accept it, or are going to accept a couple of proposals tonight for further work on Main Street. So that'll look better along with the proposed work from the facade committee. Might be time to move on to Phase Two next year, and we'll do this a block at a time.
Good, thank you. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I think that's a great idea. Is anyone around this table part of this table? No? Oh, all right, because my question, actually, I, I would hope, I would hope to, I would like to hear and hope to hear that the facade committee, I think, yes, Yarmouth Facade Society, pardon me, that they would have sat down already with, with other interested members from another area so that they all get to sit down together and everybody understands this is what the project time is this year. Hopefully, everyone did expect to be up and ready this coming year, but now they're finding out, no, they're not. I think this is going to be an unpleasant surprise for them. And it is unfortunate if they don't all sit down together and they know exactly where they fit and don't fit in the future.
So, so I'll say this to that, I do know that our economic development officer has had conversations with those people who were, who were very excited about Phase Two
Okay.
that to help them understand that we just, we just don't have the money to do it, but, but that we will be.
So what you're telling me is they are aware that, no, they're not on this year?
I, I know some of them are. I'm not sure if all are, but I know she's had those conversations.
Okay, because.
Yeah. Fair's fair.
It is fair. Fair is fair, but it also hurts for me to say, yeah, I agree with everybody, you know, you're not in this year, maybe next year, and, oh, by the way, do you know about this yet?
So, yeah. So, I don't, I don't, unless I'm mistaken, there's nobody at this table that would not have done anything to see Phase Two happen.
Absolutely.
We all, every single one of us.
Absolutely. I agree.
Really excited about it, and, and we've done a lot. We've done a lot in the past year, and, and the funds just aren't there, so we have to, we have to be sensible about it, and, and next year's coming.
The enthusiasm is growing to the point where everybody is itching, itching to get at it, so.
Good. So, CAO? Go ahead.
Your Worship, the, the Fassad Program, it was conceived of as a, as an incentive program, a, a program to motivate reinvestment into, into the, how our Main Street looks. It was not meant to be a program into which we would commit to, to cost share with every property owner, the repainting, the rejigging of their facade. So, I think you might want to consider some advice back to your society that they establish that a program will be in an area for one year, maybe after this year, that a program will only be available for one year in a designated area. And so, what happens is you have to make a decision. Are you in or are you out? And if you are out, and everyone around you is in, then the motivation might come from a, from another source. It won't be that you're going to get financial cost sharing, but that you want to look as good and as attractive as, as the properties around you. So, that way, you'll be able to move the program around to areas that, that you can afford to and that need a little bit of extra incentive.
That is more than fair. Either you're in, or you're not.
Yes.
Deputy?
Yes.
Your Worship, I just wanted to connect up with Counselor Phil. Did he make a motion, or are we making a motion to accept staff's recommendation? Was there a separate, two, two separate motions?
Two, two separate motions.
Two separate, so we should be approving the staff recommendation first, and then Phil's motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation to approve from the Yarmouth Fassad Society to maintain the Phase One program district from Main Street, from King Street to Forest Street for the 2016 Downtown Fassad Program.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Question?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Counselor Mooney, what was your, do we have, do you have Counselor Mooney's second motion?
Your Worship, I'll, I'll make that...
Put your light on there.
I'll put that, the, I'll put that motion to the Committee of the Whole.
Oh, good. Okay. We'll wait on that.
So, we'll have more time to think about it, that $150,000 will be committed to the Fassad Program for the next budget, next fiscal year.
Okay.
And then, and Jeff will have an opportunity, I think, or Caroline will be here, or maybe somebody can come in and...
Speak to it.
Speak to it. I'd like to see, maybe Mr. Dares come in and just give us an overview on what happened last year, what they're expecting this year, and where they expect to go in the future with the program.
Good. Counselor Dennis?
I'm just going to ask a question here, because I don't really know anything about this, but remember when we talked about the Doug Mallonson Park, and Counselor Phil brought up something about some fund that we had set aside that if we didn't have it in the budget to do this project, that there was another fund that we could have took some money out of? What is that fund?
That's the, and Jeff will probably speak to it better, myself, that's the, when they come do developments, instead of, sometimes they give a certain percentage of land and/or money, so the money goes into a fund which does, Jeff, green spaces, parks, other things, so I think, what do we have in, what do we have in the fund in excess of $100,000, I think?
Could we use any of that for the Fassad Program?
I think that's already allocated for parks and green spaces instead of bricks and mortar, bricks and mortar on buildings anyways.
Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, so that's a, an authority that we have in the Municipal Government Act, when there's subdivisions done, and a subdivision can simply be a splitting of a property. So, we collect 5% as, as a cash in lieu of green space, and then we reinvest that into, into our parks and so on, on motions of council. It's, it's restricted fund, so it isn't available, as most of our other reserves are for general purpose.
Okay. Okay, where are we?
I...
I know where we are on the page, I just wanted to, did we pass the motions that had to be passed? Is there anything else you need, I guess? CAO?
Did you deal with the additions?
With the, no, no, I meant with regard to...
You mean the whole?
Who said we should have meetings in July? Okay.
I'm bringing that motion back.
Agreement to use information. CAO?
So, this is a standard agreement. As, as council's well aware, we're using electronic voting for the 2016 municipal election, and so, as such, we are getting the, the electors list, the provincial electors list, and we have to sign an agreement with third party for the use of that information, the information on the electors list, and so, I've had solicitor review the agreement. There are no, as he says, red flags in it. It is a standard agreement that Sidle uses with all their customers, and so, I'd look for your agreement to, to sign the agreement.
Moved by Deputy?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Mooney. Any discussion?
Question?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Election audit proposal, excuse me, election audit proposal? You need, is this attached?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, as part of the electronic voting process, it is required that we have the process audited before, during, and obviously, the results at the, at the end of the, of the process. Now, it does not have to be a, a municipal auditor that undertakes this, however, in the interest of ensuring that it's done professionally, for the 2012 municipal election, we sought proposals and selected Grant Thornton to do that work. They did a, a very good job, exceptional, and so, I've asked them to provide a proposal for this year. You see it is dated today, so I'm not giving it to you late on purpose, but I would ask that you consider approving them as, as the auditor of our municipal election, accept their proposal.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship. I make the motion to approve the company Grant Thornton as our, as our upcoming election auditor.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded? I gotta read, I haven't read this. Discussion, oh, question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried.
Just explain the different areas.
Yeah, please. I just, yeah, I get a lot of questions about this.
Right. So, so the e-voting thing is, is audited in the sense that you, you need to be sure that, that it's functioning properly during the balloting process, and so, the municipal auditor, sorry, the election auditor is provided with some PIN numbers to, to try and vote, and their, their intentions during the election process is to try and, try and break the system, I mean, try to, try to have it fail, to cast ballots and see if it works the way that it's supposed to randomly throughout the balloting period. And so, so there's a number of processes, and they're all listed in Appendix A of the report, and these are, these are the standard, standard processes that are, that all election, electronic election municipal auditors will do, and so, at the end of it, they, they give us a written opinion that from their, their processes, the system either performed as it was supposed to, or that it hasn't, and if it hasn't, we have a problem. Last time, the system performed very well, and, and we got a report that said, that said as much, and so, it, it's just a requirement of the, of the electronic balloting process.
I don't like it. Still don't like it. Yes?
I do have another note, and passed to me. The returning officer wanted it to be mentioned publicly this evening that the kits for candidates consider, or people considering being candidates for mayor or council are available now at Town Hall during regular office hours. So, if anybody is interested around this table or otherwise in picking up their kit, they are available.
So, that kit, picking up that kit doesn't bind you to anything?
No, there is a nomination day that is approximately, I don't, I don't know...
Let's think of September 15th.
September...
13th. Remember I said that this morning? Yeah.
September 13th, and so, you have to file papers. You actually have to have nominations, and you have to file papers to be a candidate, and I believe there is a 24-hour sober second thought. You can, you can withdraw your, you can withdraw your, you can withdraw your papers with no penalty within 24 hours.
Okay. Thank you.
So, you can file it anytime?
So, nominations are accepted by appointment, one week ahead of nomination day, so if you're planning to come file your papers, you simply make an appointment with the returning officer and do that, but on nomination day itself, you don't need an appointment, you can just come in and, and file. Now, you can declare your candidacy anytime, but your candidacy is truly not official until you've filed your papers.
It pays your money.
It pays your money.
Well, there's no time like the present. I'm in for another term. I mean, I'll put my name in for another term. Okay, so reports, council advisory committees, we did the Committee of the Whole, citizen advisory committees, there was nothing there? I didn't see anything. Reports for information, any questions for committee chairs? Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship. Not to put anyone around the table on, on the spot, but I guess I am. We do, I can't recall the last time that we have received the financials or any statements from, from, from many of, of the committees that we sit on, or many of the boards, like Yesta, I don't know when, how often do you go through, through, through your, through your financials or, or your, your expenses at Yesta? Every meeting? Then perhaps we should request that they be shared?
We, we have always shared.
I'm sorry?
We've already asked that every committee that we sit on be shared, everything be shared, meeting dates, all, all the information be shared with all of us, but he's going to request that again.
It's, we, we don't know when, when the meetings are.
Go ahead. Oh, well, we're in a long line, there you go.
Yeah, so, so we have requested a couple of years ago now, and this was requested by council, that each organization, when they're sending out their meeting packages, include every member of council, so we'll just remind them, all of them, that that's our desire, and hopefully, they'll follow through.
I understand every year, when it comes to budget time, we understand, yes, they need money for this and this and this, but that's just a, a once, once in a year insight that they give us into their expenses and what they need. If, on the other hand, the, these committees do not share their monthly expenses with their committee or their boards, then, okay, then I understand why we haven't been receiving them.
But they do.
Then I believe we should be receiving them as well.
And we will.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good?
Yes.
Okay? All right, so we've got a lot of lights on. So, Deputy, you're on.
Just a comment about this, the activity of this past weekend's rib fest. I noticed Keith Condon and Mitch Bonner have just left the building, so I thought it was a fantastic event, and I had my two pounds of, of ribs, so I don't know how many pounds they cooked, but I'm here, it was in the thousands.
Twenty thousand.
In the thousands, yeah.
Twenty thousand pounds of ribs, 6,000 pounds of chicken. I'm still wearing some of that.
And I hear that they're going to, we're going to perhaps have it next year also. So, what a, what a nice and wonderful event. Thank you very much to the organizers of that event.
Thank you. Deputy? Counselor Dennis?
Another thing that I would like to know, if we could get, is the transit numbers at least every couple of months to see how the transit system's working.
Go ahead.
Yep. We can do that. We were intending quarterly, so staff is meeting Linda next week.
Next week?
Next week, to have a look at, at the data and, and operations, and we'll then convene a meeting of the advisory committee, but as far as the data goes, the only complicating factor in the data is actually the cash fare, because that doesn't go in the system the same way the cards do, and so, it's, it's an extra process to put that, put that together. But, yeah, we can do that, no problem.
That was another problem, too, with, now that we're accepting cash, I don't find that we're selling as much bus passes as we used to. It's slowed down the bus passes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that. We'll look at the data. You would know as a vendor, you know, how it goes at your counter, and we'll, we'll bring you the, the data more broadly, and, you know, I think the, the cash fare is a convenience. We've certainly had nobody complain about it. It just means we have sort of two systems going, and, you know, it's, it's working. We wish that fewer people were using cash, but it's relatively popular.
So, Mr. Condon, what we see in the audience, you just stepped out for a second, but the Deputy Mayor was saying an official, oh, and there's Mitch as well, an official thank you for, for the rib fest. Put us, something else that put us on the map again, and, and thank you for all the work that you've done?
I enjoyed it.
Oh, we enjoyed it.
We gave it next year.
Yes. So, she's, she's back next year.
Left it.
Yeah, it was, it was wonderful. It was, it was big, I think bigger than they expected. We sure can eat. It's a good thing.
We had no idea what 2,000 pounds of ribs were going to be.
Yeah, I can well imagine. And I have to say this, because your, your volunteers, because I was there, Lori Behr was there, and he was just, just a smiling, scraping the rib bones off. Every, your volunteers were great. Yeah, good. So, thank you for that. Okay, any more questions for committee chairs? Good. Approval of invoices? Moved by Deputy, seconded by Counselor Dawes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. The date of next meeting is August 11th. CAO?
Don't want you to plan anything, but I won't be here at your next council meeting, so, just letting you know.
Man, wouldn't I love to just not have it.
Couldn't have moved the bus.
Exactly. Motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Okay.
Nothing in camera?
Nothing in camera? Good. Good stuff, folks.
Got it? Got it? Huh? Got it? What are you doing? You're doing?